Call this meeting to order. This is the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, December 20th, 2022 at 7:00 P.M. in council chambers. Ms. Coronado, take your role.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino is excused. Councilmember Frank Davis is excused, and Mayor Ken Budge is excused. Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mal Sui.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Stephen Pocken, city manager Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Tim Cox, police chief Jim Richardson, fire chief Joe Estes, city attorney.
Okay, I'll just start off with, for the indication, let's just take a moment and think about the many blessings in our lives as we, you know, finish out our year and head into the holiday season. Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, in this world with liberty and justice for all. I don't really have, I don't have proclamations. The only announcement I have is, it didn't get mentioned at our last council meeting, so I would like to acknowledge the passing of Congressman Jim Colby on December 3rd. Mr. Colby served as a congressman for 22 years. He was a kind and caring gentleman. He was one of the nicest men you could ever meet. He was a friend of Cochise County. He was a friend of Bisbee. If there was an event or anything else, you know, fun going on, you could count on him being down here. Anyway, I would like to offer condolences to his family. And he was, he was truly of a wonderful man and will be missed.
Yes, he will.
Do we have anybody for call to the public?
Nobody.
So there's nobody at the call to the public, so onto general business. We have accounts payable, and I would like to move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $173,906.84. Are there any questions?
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. On this day is half heavy. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? No. Okay. No questions. So it's been moved and seconded to approve accounts payable, subject to availability funds, all in favor, signify that I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have, who else, the consent agenda is pending. Agenda item A is approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on December 6th, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the special session of mayor and council held on December 6th, 2022. C, approval of the reappointment of William Higgins to the Bisbee Arts Commission. D, approval of the reappointment of Thomas Patterson to the Board of Adjustment with a waiver for length of service. E, approval of the appointment of Mary Boikovich to the Civil Service Commission. F, approval of the reappointment of Peter Gaffer to the Designer Reboard. G, approval of the reappointment of Bill Bailey to the Parks and Recreation Committee. H, approval of the reappointment of Sandy Houston to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I, approval of the reappointment of Mary Boikovich to the Police and Fire Advisory Committee. J, approval of the reappointment of Thomas Patterson to the Police and Fire Advisory Committee with a waiver for a number of commissions currently served. K, approval of the reappointment of Carrie Bagwood to the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board with a waiver for residency required. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through K.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Coronado, you go first.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye. Motion passes. Full business. We are at number three with a discussion and possible approval of ordinance O-22-20, approving a change of zoning amendment to the Official Zoning Act to rezone 103-60-123 from residential R3 to commercial C1, limited to commercial uses as a gallery, museum, specialty retail store, and educational facility. And...
Good job.
Mr. Estes.
Yeah, Joe. Mayor Pro Tem Klein and council members, this is the second reading on this proposed ordinance. As you know, it's for a zoning classification change with specific limitations that were discussed in detail for the last minute. Are there any additional questions with regard to this item?
I have some question, no comments, it's not a question.
Okay.
I mean, when we talk about the limitation of the zoning to a specialty retail, basically, I don't know if you guys are aware, specialty retail could be a furniture store, could be many other things. So, but if we're just saying it's going to be to either gallery or, what was the other one?
Museum.
Museum, museum.
Educational facility.
Yeah. But, so like I mentioned last time, specialty store has a lot of variety. Someone can decide to come and open a furniture store. That would be considered a specialty store. So you just need to know that.
Yeah, and it is. It's whatever is classified as a specialty retail under...
Okay, we just wanted to clarify that, so...
Well, yeah, but I think the reason they were calling out those very few specific limitations was because under that general classification, there's like 50 or 60 different available uses that would not be appropriate for that locality. And there are a number, and it's hard because you can't just say, okay, we want to limit to these specialty retails and not these, you know. So that's why they chose those specific ones to make it very limited. We know what the applicant's intent is, you know, and that's not to say that in the future, if the property sold, that that intent could change. But yes, that, those are the available uses under that intent. And that was discussed at the time of the zoning meeting as well.
Yeah, because some of the constituent in that area, I've seen some calls, and you just want to make sure that, and you have no problem with the applicant because we know his intention and his thing. He just like, someone else buys it and eventually things get sold and...
Yeah, but the main concern over there was like it isn't all old Bisbee with parking and in those concerns and because of the park and the public parking, even if someone were to in the future put in some more heavily trafficked specialty retail, you know, it wouldn't have a huge impact on the area of the parking.
As long as it's not the bodega.
As long, no, no...
Only have one.
What was that again?
So my question is regarding those concerns, if it does change hands and they want to change something about it, they will have to come back before the council. Correct.
Yeah, if they want to, if it does change hands and they want to do something that's not allowed in those specific limitations, they would have to get an additional zoning change. They would have to go through the whole process, I guess.
So there's a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, that gives some safety factor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance O-22-20, approving a change of zoning and amendment to the Official Zoning Act to rezone 103-60-123 from residential R3 to commercial C1, limited to commercial use as a gallery, museum, retail, specialty retail store, and educational facility.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Coronado, would you take your role?
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye. Motion passes, four to zero. Agenda item four. Agenda item four is a discussion and possible approval of resolution R-22-05, approving a fine release with the United States Postal Service for the facility in Old Bisbee at a rent of $59,815, three-year, effective January 1, 2023. Mr. Pocken.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Klein. We brought this back to you again tonight for maybe the fourth or fifth time. As you know, your direction several meetings ago was to speak with the landlord, not that we are the landlord, with the leasing company in an effort to improve on the number of hours the lobby was open for the benefit of our postal service customers who don't have postal service delivery. And we had passed that law and waited for quite a while. And then Joe advised me last Friday that he received a phone call from JLL, the leasing company. And I'm just gonna give the microphone to Joe and let him tell you what they said. All right. So we did, as councils are aware, we continued this because of concerns that council wanted to address with USPS with regard to service hours and availability of the P.O. boxes for the residents. That was conveyed to Sarah West, who is the broker's representative for USPS through JLL. They handle over their 25, they always like to say, you know, we have 25,000 locations that we manage in lease. I guess that's supposed to reassure us that, you know, we don't have time for just one location, kind of thing. Had a good, a long discussion with her last Friday, and she said that the USPS's security department looked into it and said because of the past issues that had occurred at the location, that they were not comfortable with amending or changing the hours of service, even with the offer from the city to install security cameras and potential other security measures. I told her, I said, that's kind of short sighted because those issues have happened in the past. One, they happened in the past. Two, they weren't a time of day type issue. Those issues could have happened at any time of the day. So whether they happened at 6 o'clock at night or 10 o'clock in the morning, those issues are, you know, are always going to be a potential subject for any location that does business and has a lobby and things like that. You know, I told her, I said, you guys are making it sound like this is like a huge crime-ridden area that you can't require your employees to be, to be at the building after dark or something because you're closing down at 4:15. And she understood all that, you know, she's kind of the intermediary and, you know, doesn't really have any authority to say much. And I, you know, I told her, I said, well, you know, these are the concerns of the council who is the, you know, representative of the landlord, and they're the ones that have to approve or not approve this lease, which expires at the end of this month. You know, I said, that's something that may likely be taken into consideration. So, you know, I also reminded her, I said, you know, it's also difficult for a landlord to have a tenant that isn't very responsive. You know, the fact that it's taken almost two months to get a response and a discussion on an issue. I said, from a, you know, the landlord's representative perspective as the attorney for the landlord, that's a concern for me because, you know, you are our tenant, you know? And this is a very nice, you know, very nice building. It's a very historic building. And, you know, there are other uses that could be done with that location other than having the post office there. You know, so I reminded her that this wasn't just a done deal just because you're the USPS and, you know. So one thing that was brought to my attention, that was a question that was asked. I hadn't had a chance to do any legal research as to whether or not there's any federal regulations or requirements with regard to postal access. Because it just seems kind of very onerous that they shut that facility down at 4:15. And, you know, I even, I went over there today to, you know, because I hadn't been on the inside of it, to look. And I'm like, it would be very simple to put in a security gate between the desk and the foyer where all the boxes are and be able to have the box area accessible. Because I told her, I said, one, the post office forces all residents of Old Bisbee to have a P.O. box. You will not do physical service. So you require them to have postal boxes, and then you limit their access to those boxes to where there are certain people that, if they work in Sierra Vista, they can't even access a box until a weekend or if they have to take time off of work to do an hour and a half trip to come home just to get packages or mail or something because of your guys' position on these hours. I said, it's just not reasonable. She understood all that. She sympathized with it, but in the end, you know, she apologized and just has to be updated and informed, has to the council's decision with regard to this lease. And I told her, I said, if the lease is not renewed, then we fall under the existing lease holdover provisions where they, you know, essentially become a month-to-month tenant until we can work out some type of new lease agreement. I also mentioned, on behalf of Mel.
Yes.
Right, I said, I know I, we have council members who are fiscally responsible, and these discussions started on this new lease, and the amount of this new lease started almost two years ago. And here we are, you know, after a year of unprecedented 40-year-plus inflationary rates, and we're still dealing with, you know, numbers from back to two years ago. So I know that will be a topic of discussion or consideration with regard to this lease. So there's a number of things for the council to consider. Again, your decision, if you choose not to renew the lease at this time, we can reengage and have additional discussions with the tenant. You know, I can't tell you whether or not that would trigger them to look for a relocation, and we would lose them as a tenant and have to try to replace them. You know, it is a 60,000, almost a $60,000 a year lease. But I would have to imagine that, you know, that location would probably attract some potential replacements if you, if you were to lose that tenant. But I know they've been there for a substantial period of time as well, and there's a historical history and things that go with that as well. It's nice to keep a, it's nice to keep a tenant that you know, that you've had for long term. You know, that's not to say we can't still have those communications. Even if we do renew the lease, we can still have those communications with their representatives and still push to make changes and to push those things that are going to benefit the residents.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of observations. Number one, I don't mean to step on the city attorney's toes, but typically with these leases with the U.S. Postal Service, they start negotiating a new lease three years in advance. So this lease was always going to start on January 1st, 2023. And then at some point, we get a lease with them, and then three years before that lease is over, that'll be doing this again. That's the way they do things. The difference this time was it was a different real estate broker than it was the last time I was involved in a lease with the postal service. I would like to recommend that you not act on this lease tonight. And the reason that I think that we should not is a couple of reasons. The first reason is this. We have laws in this country that govern the way we do things. We have laws in this country that tell us, that guarantee access to people for literally every aspect of daily life. And even though the U.S. Postal Service will conveniently tell you right now that they're not a government, it's either business. When they, when they don't want to be a business, then they'll be a government agency. They're quasi-governmental, and they still get a, when they don't sell postage stamps, they get their money from the feds. They need to follow the same rules everybody follows. And if the entrance to your store isn't accessible to your customers, you're in trouble. Yeah. If you can't get in City Hall to pay your sewer garbage bill, we're in trouble. Okay? But you can't go and get your mail after 4:15 P.M., and nobody's in trouble. I think we need to do a little more legal research on the accessibility issue, and then hopefully we can come back with another recommendation for you in the next two to four weeks.
I have a question. The post office in San Jose, their mailboxes, they have access to them beyond 4:00 P.M. I know that the building is a different structure, so obviously it isn't a policy across the board. So they're not open to making physical changes to accommodate the residents? We have a precedence in San Jose, so I think that that should be part of the conversation because they exist. And they can, we can discuss accommodating residents by blocking off the postal office, so...
Yeah, I'd like to concur with what Steve said. Really, this is, will be my thought on this, and I think Joseph alluded to this. Basically, we think they have us by the neck here. And I've never seen, I mean, in my past life, I've done, I worked with JGL too and colleagues. And I think these guys, and I don't know how much the government or the agency have into this, I think the leasing agent here, trust me, he's playing that part because he brings them at this rate, he's done well for them. And with, probably he's gone back, this is my assumption because I said, I've been in this field in the past. And I don't think this is, this is a, that's what we do, Steve said. We do this for the citizen, we do it for our people. Our job here as a council, as a council and mayor and management is to do what's right by the people. And I don't know why we feel they can get away with this, and they just tell us. And if, Joe, if we can go on a month-to-month basis, I don't think that's a problem until we negotiate something that's beneficial to the town. And they can't just say, well, this is our deal, take it or leave it. I don't think, you know, and I may be saying this, but they have no other building such as this that they can get for this price anywhere right now. So my recommendation, or I would suggest, let's just do the month-to-month and continue with this. And we don't have to make a decision today and just say because we don't have an option, we don't have a choice. I think we do have choices.
Perfect. Then no action is necessary, or do you want to make a recommendation?
No, if there's no, no motion, then there's, there's no action, and the item dies for life.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I would say is that if you have a box at the Copper Queen Plaza, you may want to register your opinion with your local postmaster. I don't see a lot of people on deck tonight. I see people, ten people watching and wanting to...
People celebrating on Christmas.
I know.
I agree, because, you know, even, even, I tell you, even for some businesses, at least, because, you know, being there, I get a lot of feedback, and people are frustrated. And that's why I'm coming with this opinion. I hear it every day. Oh, we just made it, you know, like you work in, like Steve said, they work in Sierra Vista, they come and they have to, you can have access to their box. In some of my cases where I have something where I can be, I can be able to go during, I have to go after, you know, a certain hour, my, when my help comes in. And I sometimes have products that I can't even get into. So it is, I don't think we should allow them. I mean, yeah, they are agency, they are government, they are federal, whatever that is, but we have, we have our right here too.
And I quite frankly don't know how far she went with this request and what gave her the answer. I'd really like to see a little more.
No, she...
I'd like to see a little more pressure put on the local...
I can say she's probably didn't go, she just thought she can, you know, she can just, you know, small town, we're fearful that we're gonna...
No, I'd like to see the local do...
We're not fearful.
...weigh in on this with the local postmaster.
Yeah.
So...
Going a month, but anyway, they didn't give us that much of an increase. So it's not like we're negotiating, we're gonna lose the, lose that big amount. I mean, it's...
Yeah, well, it's fair.
It's fair, that's what I'm saying. It's not like they gave us such a big jump that we're fearful of that. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying fair, yeah, it's fair.
Okay.
Okay, so let's move on to agenda item five. And that is discussion and possible approval of a grant agreement from the Mellon Foundation in the amount of $3.5 million. Ratify the grant agreement from the Mellon Foundation. Mr. Pocken.
Now, this is a Merry Christmas item.
Please.
And it's even more of a Merry Christmas after I got an email from Carrie just a little bit ago. The, as you're all aware, we have been talking to Mellon Foundation about a $3.5 million grant that they invited us to apply for after Camp Nakco appeared on the 11 most endangered list. It was, I guess I'll call this an educational experience. I think before we got done putting together the grant proposal, I think we actually put together a pretty good business plan for Camp Nakco, moving forward for the next four years. And so it was excellent exercise, and it gave us an opportunity to really think ahead, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it moving forward. So the way the grant system works, however, is that they sent us an email saying you were, you have been selected. And then they said, tomorrow we are going to send you a DocuSign form, and you need to sign it and return it forthwith. Well, as you know, normally, we bring things to you and we get you to approve them before we have the mayor sign the document and return. Wasn't possible in this case. Therefore, what we're asking you to do tonight is to ratify what we have already done, which is sign the grant agreement by DocuSign, which was done, I think, last Thursday with the mayor's full support. Now, here's where Christmas comes in. About an hour ago, Carrie emailed me to let me know that we received $2 million of this money yesterday. It's in the bank, Merry Christmas.
Earning interest.
Yes, earning interest. And what I would call a very unusual period of high interest rates. So we'll actually make a little money on this stuff. So, so anyway, staff's recommendation is to approve the motion just before you tonight to ratify the approval of the grant agreement.
Can we ask some questions?
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good question. Is there a time limit, and when can we proceed with this? I mean, is there a time that we have to, otherwise we have penalties or the use of the grant? I mean, I didn't have the chance to read all the little details. So if you can give us an idea.
Sure.
Okay.
In a nutshell, this grant is a four-year grant agreement. And the provision was that they would send us $2 million upon signature of the grant agreement. That's already been done. There will be four annual reports that management will have to make. And at the end of the first year, we'll do our... And at the end of the first year, we'll do our report. And then uh, once, once they receive that report, then they will send us another one point five million dollars. Their expectation is that we will have spent all three point five million dollars in four years. So beginning date of the grant agreement is technically January first, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
So I have to wait till.
And just for the public, uh, this stipulation on the use, is it uh, on the discretion of uh, there's a plan probably we have presented to them, so based on a plan. Just so I can make it to the public, so that they have a question. So the plan was, so we have a plan, how this money is going to be utilized, what we're gonna do with that money? And based on that plan, this grant was, was awarded.
That's correct. So it's basically all they have for us now, all we have to do is execute.
Okay, good, thank you. And thank you, guys, for bringing this. This is, I think, it's a tremendous thing for Bisbee. It's gonna bring in some economic uh revitalization, I think will help. This along with the, the one we get from the state and we need the public to know. And you guys did a good job on this, just so make sure you guys know that.
Well, I, I think I said it the last council meeting, but I've never been asked to ask for more.
Yeah, it doesn't happen very often.
We just need to make sure you use it properly and it's done and executed. I think that's, that's, that's the big part.
We're all good.
So do we have a motion?
I move to accept the grant agreement from the Mellon Foundation in the amount of three point five million dollars and ratifying the grant agreement from the Mellon Foundation.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to accept the grant agreement from the Mellon Foundation. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item six is discussion and possible approval of an amended memorandum of understanding between the City of Sierra Vista, Cochise County Flood Control District, Hurford Natural Resources Conservation District, the Nature Conservancy, City of Bisbee, Fort Wachika, and the U.S. Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management and Gila District. Mr. Parker.
Thank you. In, in a nutshell, this is an agreement that has been in force since, I believe, twenty eighteen, when the Cochise County Recharge Network was formed. The members that are listed in the subject line that Anna just read to you are members and almost all of them have been members since, since the network was formed. The reason for this action tonight is that the Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management has asked to join. They have been partners with us in the recharge network all these years, but it's only in the last couple of years that, that the network has invited federal agencies to join. And so um the Fort Wachika joined last year and this year BLM has asked to join. The, 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 the memorandum of understanding is identical to the one that we're currently under. The only difference between the two is that it adds BLM as a member. And staff recommends approval.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just, uh, is there any benefit for this addition? I mean, will that, will that make a difference in?
Well, I think that, you know, the BLM obviously not only controls a lot of land in the San Pedro Valley. But they also have access to funds that most of the rest of us don't have access to in order to deal with projects that may come up in the future where we need their assistance on their land. We've never had a organized, well, we had organized bodies in the past, but no one really has jurisdiction individually over the valley, okay? And so in, in order to keep the river flowing, there's been a lot of different activities and different organizations through the years that have come together to make the river continue to flow. Back when I was here the first time, I was on a, what was called an organizing board that was charged by the state with organizing a, a formal board of trustees and going to the voters and getting approval. So we had a, we had an organization that would be charged with taking care of keeping water in the river. And I'm oversimplifying.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, that failed to get the voters' approval. And so subsequent to that effort, these different groups that are listed here started meeting together in order to try and achieve the same goals that we would have been achieving as an organization. And I think there's something out of order, three um recharge areas already that have already been established. As you're aware, we're working with Cochise County right now to establish a recharge site now by the river using affluent from Bisbee wastewater. And so those are the kind of projects that collectively we will do up along the San, upper San Pedro Basin in, in the future to keep the river flowing.
So it's a plus, it's a.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the amended memorandum of understanding between City of Sierra Vista, Cochise County Flood Control District, Hurford Natural Resources Conservation District, the Nature Conservancy, City of Bisbee, Fort Wachika, and the U.S. Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management, Gila District.
Second?
Oh, okay, I can second, second. Sure. Oh, you can second?
I should say could, but I was asking.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we have motion and a second. All in favor of approving the M O U, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Agenda item seven is discussion and possible approval to allow the Bisbee Police Department to purchase a twenty twenty-three Harley Davidson fully equipped police package motorcycle using Governor's Office of Highway Safety awarding grant in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight. Chief Cox.
Mayor Protim Klein and council members, thank you once again. This one again is coming through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Reached out to them, they found a little bit more money for us to purchase another vehicle. This time we decided on a police motorcycle. Its formal duties will be traffic enforcement and that's it. It'll make it easier for us to get up through what we call Area One, Old Bisbee, the winding roads, claws and gulch, all of that. We have lost a couple of traffic incidents up in that area, so it'll be significant to our operations. With that said, I just ask that you guys approve it so we can move forward with it.
I have a question. Now, are we going to hire an officer for this or are we going to utilize who we have with special training?
It'll be a special detail, a special assignment. First of all, you have to be a certified peace officer. Secondly, you have to have a motorcycle endorsement. There's only three of us that do, myself included. And lastly, you have to attend a special motorcycle officer or what they call motor's school to learn how to operate the motorcycle as a police officer safely and effectively. And I forgot to mention, it's gonna be black and white.
Nice. And, and I know that, you know, people are probably gonna wonder, why is it a Harley? There is a specification that it has to be.
By American.
American made.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think you alluded to this. So now you have a, a different form of transportation motorcycle and you said we, we do need it based on.
It'll help with my specific targeted enforcement programs that I'm required to do as part of these grant operations anyway. A motorcycle has been proven historically for police departments to be more effective in traffic enforcement, specifically uh, speed and aggressive driving, school zone enforcement, specific traffic enforcement. Motorcycles have been proven to be more effective than, than a vehicle and an officer in that vehicle. They're quicker, they're more maneuverable, they can get places faster, and they can track down violators in a quicker manner.
And you've never had one before, so this will be the first one?
Yes, sir, that's my intent.
I think you want to ride it, I think, if you have a license.
There may be a chief on a motorcycle on the parade, I'm not gonna, yeah.
I, I kind of gather that, because you said there's only him and two others, so.
Not, it's not specifically, I mean, it's for Governor Hard, uh, Governor's Office of Highway Safety, that's what this is for.
It's for motorcycle? Is it, it's not specifically for a motorcycle, is it?
Yes.
Oh, the grant is for a motorcycle. For a motorcycle.
No other vehicle. As a secondary consideration as well for you guys to think of as well, it's also a great P R tool for kids, for ages, the public. Especially being a Harley, I think that would be great for in Bisbee anyway.
Other question? We had, I've heard a number of people talk about accidents, you know, chasing someone in a police car. What is the rate of accidents harm to police officers?
I can only speak for what I know of, for the departments that I know of. Last year in the state of Arizona, there was two. One was caused by a driver on a cell phone not paying attention and the other one was called by, caused by a mechanical error on the bike in a high-speed pursuit. I don't know, oh, and there was one in Phoenix where the Phoenix police officer was rear-ended by an individual not paying attention to how they were driving. Uh, my understanding as far as officer at fault, I have never heard of any. I can honestly, I have not heard of any. Me personally, I've been riding since I was twelve. Um, I'm forty-eight now. I've had one accident and it was completely and totally my fault.
I, I have one more question. The thirty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight, will that be including associated expense such as the training, such as the specific training schooling you may have to go, or just the cost of your motorcycle?
It is the cost of the motorcycle and the equipment associated to that motorcycle, with the exception of radio. Training for police officers in the state of Arizona, if it's sanctioned by our certifying body post, doesn't cost us a dime.
So you mean no additional expenses associated?
This is what it's gonna cost.
This is total?
Yes.
So what is the?
Minus a hotel room, which is reimbursable.
Okay.
So what is the seventy-two thousand four hundred and three point six seven?
On the second page, or on the contract?
Yeah.
Where you at?
On the back of the page.
Which number were you looking at, ma'am?
It says estimated cost from two, um, and then there's a total of.
Oh, where it changes from thirty-two to seventy-two?
Yes.
It was originally a thirty-two thousand dollar grant that I got at the beginning of October. With the addition of this motorcycle, it now makes it a seventy-two thousand and some change grant.
Okay.
That's the total amount of money I've been awarded thus far through this individual grant. If you approve this.
Thank you for the explanation, because I didn't see where was the total cost. So this is in addition to the one you received previous?
Right, it's under the same contract number, because if you look at the top of that page, there's a contract number up there, which is the PTS zero zero eight. So I already had this contract, uh, which is, when I ask for this vehicle, it falls under this type of contract, so they just added it to that contract.
I did need that clarification, thanks very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I don't have a question, just a comment. We are really moving up in our department because we used to have bike patrols and they were ten speeds. So now we're moving up to Harley, I think we're doing pretty good.
Hopefully it'll be a little bit more by the time I'm done.
I told you he was a bike guy, I mean, you can tell.
I don't want it. It's the crew guy.
Yeah, 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 I mean, he's so enthusiastic about it.
Alarm wrestling.
Not me.
So actually, I think I will move to allow the Bisbee Police Department to purchase a twenty twenty-three Harley Davidson fully equipped police package motorcycle using Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight. Is there a second?
I second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving this?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Now to Chief Richardson. We have um, agenda item eight and it's discussion and possible approval of a purchase in the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred and three dollars and thirty cents for wildland equipment, hoses and nozzles for the fire department using FEMA micro grant. This amount does not include shipping.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and council. Tonight, before you, I'm asking to be able to spend the part of the fifty-two thousand dollar grant we got from FEMA. This is a, it was a micro grant. We did get word today that we were declined for our fire truck that we applied for. But this was the micro grant that we did receive. There is a five percent match, uh, which we did budget for. So we did reach out and to different companies and got quotes. The one we're recommending, um, this company was the cheapest on our nozzles. And was a little bit more expensive on the hose, but the cheaper hose that we got a quote for is a lesser quality hose. So we were asking to go with this company for the better hose. And then the wildland gear and stuff that, that quote came from the Forest Service, which is a government contract. So we didn't have to walk to it. Or we didn't have to get quotes for that. If you guys have any questions? Do you have the answer?
What is our five percent match?
It's around two thousand dollars.
Thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. I calculated, no, you say five percent. I just, I already done that.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're taking it to Vegas next week.
Two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
Definitely, definitely, definitely.
What we don't have on here still is the shipping and also some wildland boots for all the guys. So there's a, there's around seventy-three hundred dollars left. We're hoping that the shipping isn't too much, that we can all still get a pair of boots, but that hose is really heavy and there's quite a bit of it here, so we, we wanted to wait to get our boat, our boots till after the shipping was calculated in there.
So, so you don't have an idea how much the shipping is?
I, I don't, they, they won't know until they, I guess it's weighed by weight.
And that will, will come out of the budget, not out of this grant?
It'll come out of this grant, yeah.
It will come out of this grant?
Yeah, it's, it's figured in there.
Oh, it's figured in there.
Right, it was just, it's just a estimate.
Tom, I can pick it up in Phoenix.
There you go. I, I'd be happy to drive myself in a bit.
Are there any other questions?
No, hopefully just a good hoses and nozzles, I mean, that's all.
Yeah, we're, we're in dire need of new hoses, we're, we're on our last leg. The hose, yes, is welcome, much needed.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve a purchase in the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred and three dollars and thirty cents for wildland equipment, hoses and nozzles for the fire department using the FEMA micro grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the approval of the purchase, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Agenda item nine. We have discussion and possible approval of an agreement for the appointment of the city magistrate for the magistrate for the city of Bisbee.
Take this one since I was the one involved with the discussions and negotiations with Judge Poppy and with Rick. Essentially, the, the contract remains unchanged with, with one, with two exceptions. One, uh, the term goes to a two-year term, um, which is common with magistrate judge contracts, because you tend to want to have those follow along with your. because you tend to want to have those follow along with your election cycle, so there's no, uh, you know, allegations or, or arguments that the, the legislative branch is interfering with the judicial branch, when it comes to, you know, shorter-term contracts and saying, hey, you know, if you don't do what we want you to do, we're gonna replace you kind of thing. And then also, the, the amount remained the same, uh, he just asked that it be classified as a, instead of a ten ninety-nine, a part-time, uh, employee, so that he doesn't have to go through the process of, uh, calculating out and doing the taxes and stuff. And I talked to Kerry to see what that would actually cost the, the city, because we'd have those, a few little contributions with regard to, uh, you know, fight and stuff like that. Essentially, it came out, I think it was less than, uh, ninety bucks a, a month difference. So the recommendation from staff is that, uh, we, we agree to renew the agreement. And it, again, is for a, a term of two years, which keeps that amount flat for two years as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, the twelve fifty, that's inclusive of everything, or just is the basic? Do I have to pay any other, or just like flatting?
That's it for, for the magistrate judge. We have a, a separate agreement with the county with regard to the court facilities and, and those costs associated with the court facility.
Oh.
Because essentially what, what is required, the talent, the city is required to have a magistrate court. And so in rural counties like this, the vast majority, if not all of the, uh, the, the cities, have done a co-location agreement with the county, with the justice courts, so that those courts can be essentially combined and you have one judge who provides, presides over both. So you, because otherwise, if the city were to have to have its own magistrate court, we'd have to have a facility, we'd have to have a judge, an administrative assistant, a prosecutor, uh, and the cost would be substantially higher than, than what we currently pay. So in addition to this cost for Judge Poppy, then I believe, what is it, thirty or?
Thirty-something.
I think it's thirty-seven thousand dollars a year for the, the cost of the, the court with the county, because they break it up based off of, uh, percentage of.
I mean, associate this cost, like what, like, uh, things, the administration, what's that?
Right, because you've got the, the facility, you've got the administrative support, you've got the filing system, computer systems. All of those systems, all of that cost i- is included with that, so it, it is a substantial thing. I would estimate that if the city were to have to maintain its own magistrate court, you'd be looking at in excess of two to three hundred thousand dollars a year.
There's no question, you know, about employees and secretaries and, yeah.
Back in two thousand and six, uh, we were, we were running the magistrate court out of the basement of the law.
Yeah.
If I recall correctly, the annual budget for that operation was over seventy thousand dollars.
I believe so.
So.
There's no question.
We've been getting a better deal for a very long time.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agreement for the appointment of the city magistrate for the magistrate court of the city of Bisbee.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor of the agreement, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agenda Item Ten. Uh, discussion and review of the short perm rental application form, Mr. Estes.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein and council members. I'd ask that this item just be brought before the council so that you could see what city staff did in, uh, preparing and establishing a, an application and guidelines for the newly adopted short-term rental, uh, ordinance. I think they did an extremely good job that, that details out and addresses a lot of the questions that were asked upfront. I'm sure there's, you know, with as many short-term rentals as we have and, you know, different individuals, we're gonna have additional questions, especially with the new process and system going into place. But I just wanted, this was just for, uh, to bring to council to show you the, this is the ne- the next step is, when this goes into effect after the first of the year, we have a, a very detailed application process that spells out the requirements and, you know, specifically uses and points to language in the, the code and ordinance as to why we have, have these only applications. So I just wanted to, to bring that to, to your attention and show you, so if you, if you had any questions with regard to the application or the information that was on there.
Well, it's just a, it's just a review, just in case we're acting out.
Yeah, this was just for information purposes, it's not something that the council's required to approve. It's a, an administrative form that we use for the application process, but, you know, if, I, I wanted to bring it to, you know, council's attention, uh, Nina did, uh, work with, I think, a couple other staff members to keep this one together, uh, and they, they did a, a very good job.
It's a good form, or any?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd be, yeah.
Form looks great, good job, Nina.
Yes.
Just one observation, uh, over the past couple of, I don't know, past couple of days, it, it's, the last two weeks have been a blur. We seem to have someone in, coming in to get a business license, uh, and to register a, a B and B almost every day now.
Do you have an idea how many you've gotten so far now?
No, that's just, that's just a thing. Anecdotally, I, because they're right outside my office store, I hear them asking for it.
Yeah.
And so they're already lining up to come in and get the, and, and get legal.
That's good. That looks good, I think she did a good job, you guys did a good job.
Great job, thank you.
Couldn't find a single thing on that.
I need to try.
I tried, I tried, I tried.
Okay, here, now to the wire. Um, Agenda Item Eleven. We have discussion and possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty-two dash twenty-one designated a certain city property located in Zacateas Canyon and generally known as Buricul as a public thoroughfare and magistrate. Mr. Estes.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim and council. I was actually gonna ask to have this tabled, but thinking about it, I, I wanna move forward with doing the introduction. Now, there was a, a question and concern with regard to the, uh, legal description of the, the property. I don't think that is material to moving forward with the intent. We will have the correct legal description for the ordinance at the next meeting. But it depends how long this process takes, because you have to do two readings of an ordinance and then there's a thirty-day referendum period. I don't wanna have, to have this wait and, and then push it off to March or even April, uh, for ultimate approval. But what we have is, we have a, a property owner who has property back there in Zacateas Canyon that, according to the title company, doesn't have legal access to his property, because the title company can, although the, this is historically and always been used as a, a, a right-of-way public thoroughfare, the title company cannot find recorded documents that show that the city designated it as such. And there's a lot of title history issues with certain areas and things within Bisbee. So the owner went through a, a good amount of, of time and expense and hired an attorney, hired a surveyor, to go out and provide us with the, uh, the survey and the requirements for, uh, being able to just take what is already an existing right-of-way and just have it formally acknowledged as a right-of-way. It doesn't require the city to go out and pave it or do any additional improvements to it. That's all subject to the city's normal CIP pro- process for capital improvements and, and what gets, gets done. This is just formally acknowledging that, so that he has legal access, according to the title company, to, to the property. And so there, there is, there was a, a question with regard to, uh, which, uh, version of the legal description was, was provided, but I don't wanna hold that up, because I don't think whether it says, uh, you know, fence forty-one degrees, forty-three feet, fifty-nine inches west at a distance of twenty-two point three feet, to a point of whatever, if that changes by one number or something, that's not going to impact moving this forward. We just wanna make sure that the, the legal description is accurate for what's finally adopted and what's recorded. So I would ask that, you know, we continue to move forward with the, uh, with the intent of the ordinance. We will substitute in the correct exhibit from Pioneer Title with regard to the legal description. And if you have any questions, I can try and answer those.
I do have a question. These maps are really tiny. So are we talking at the end of the canyon where the road ends, or are we before that and off to the side?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, I guess.
Yes.
I will ask for a, 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 a better detail, just, it, it's not a, uh, there, you got your record of survey, which is required for the recording. I will ask for a, a more just general overlay of, of where this, uh, this right-of-way is. I believe it's, it's just the current existing, what is, what is used, it just.
Are you, are you interested in generally knowing where it is? Because I think there's someone in the audience who might be able to answer your question.
Speaking of, with a record?
I'm Kate O'Daly, um, I live in Zacateas. And, um, I was studying those maps, and what it looks like to me is that it's a section that's just passed where I live, and it's already city property, because, uh, the document says it's this real city property that we're talking about, correct?
Yeah, that, that was the, the issue was, when I was first approached by the attorney for this, I was like, well, you know, if you want right-of-way, you're gonna have to dedicate it over. And she's like, no, 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 you don't understand, this is already city property. It's just the issue is the title company can't find where that property was designated as a public thoroughfare right-of-way. So that's what we're doing here. It's already city property, it's already being used for that access. We just want, they, they want to have it formally acknowledged, so that when any, you know, if they go to sell the property or they, they do any type of loan or improvement on the property, they can show when they have to do a title report that they have legal access to that property.
So it's a very small piece, actually, and, um, I live, I don't know, are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Zacateas, okay. So it's past forty-seven Zacateas, which is where, um, I live. And it's, um, between my house and, um, the beginning of this property, which I believe the fellow who's brought this to, um, starts. And that's, it's a, it's a very small section, and that's always been city property there. So it's not the whole road, they're not talking about from the old Chinese laundry or bear roads place. It's not from that, from that, if I'm reading this correctly. It's not that whole section, it's just a very small section that the city already owns. So I mean, I just thought it was kinda curious to me, since it's already a city-owned piece of property, so I was surprised that it had to be recognized as a public right-of-way, because it's a city road. It's a, it's a, it's a road, not city property, so.
Well, it's, it's a city property, but the, the, the concern wasn't, the issue that they had was that the title company can't show that there's a, you know, it, when they go to issue a, a, a title policy to, to insure a property, they do their research and they came back and said, we can't find anything that shows that this was ever designated as such. So to do, to do that property and to address that concern for the property owner, and, uh, that's what we've been asked to do. So that, that's the whole reason for, and it is just that small section there at the, at the end to.
Well, it's not quite at the end.
Well.
Well, that was my question, is it at the end, or how, like, how close to the road's property?
Oh, it's, um, it's probably about three-quarters to the end. From, from where the road turns to dirt, then it's, then it's not that section of the road, it's a small section, almost to the end of the canyon.
So in conclusion, since this is, has been identified as a public property, belongs to the city, am I right? And basically, any person can use public pr- property to get to, to their destination. Street, an alley, they have the right. So what's the issue now, what do we have to do, why is it, has it become an issue?
Well, just because it's city property doesn't mean it's a public thoroughfare.
Oh, okay.
And that would, that would be like saying that you could just drive across the park because it's city property.
Okay.
You still, the city still designates, um, public thoroughfares as rights of way.
Okay.
And that's what we're doing, is just saying, okay, we're formally acknowledging it. Likely it, it happened in the past, because it ha- is a road, it's been used as a road. There's just, there's, as you know, there are a lot of historical issues with the recorded documents with a lot of the city property and things here. And so this is kinda cleaning this up. This was brought to the attention of the property owner by the title company, and they were told, okay, this is a process that you have to do to, to be able to get title insurance.
Yes, then.
This will document that that.
This is, that's fine, I think you just, and that's, it will document it, but the feature references, anytime they're looking for title, this is gonna show up, and that will clean it up.
Yeah, you, you don't sell property that doesn't have public access.
Yeah, okay.
So this will document.
This gets, this gets recorded and becomes part of the public property.
Cause I, 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 I didn't understand what this is all about, so.
Yeah, so, and just to be clear, we will have the correct legal description and, uh, we'll have a, a little, uh, map highlighting that section, so you can see physical word, as I agreed with. You know, you look at those survey maps, you're like, that's a lot of squiggly lines, what are we talking? I was like, well, you gotta be able to read the legal description and get out your ruler and measure the, the twenty-two degrees.
There you go.
You know.
I'll do that next time.
Yeah, that's why I went to law school, so I didn't have to.
Do we have?
Did we have a, I think we had a question.
Yeah.
Well, um, I think you've answered the question, but what, you want to approve the notice of intent? We're not doing anything, but we're approving that we will investigate it?
No, we, this isn't, this isn't ordinance, so an ordinance requires two readings. This is the introduction, this is the, uh, we call it the notice of intent, which is the introduction of an ordinance. And then the second reading is the adoption of the ordinance. And then after the second reading, with the ordinance is adopted and approved, then there's a thirty-day referendum period that we have to wait before that ordinance becomes effective. So it's a long process to be able to, to go through this process, because this wouldn't even be kind of effective until sometime in, in, uh, February, because it would be brought back at the first meeting in, in January. And so it would be after February, if we delay it again, then it pushes it off until March. And so, um, I just wanted to clarify that we, we will have a corrected legal description and a map at the second reading for the proposed adoption.
Yes, uh, and just one additional comment, their, their attorney has been working on this for a very long time. And, and it was her that asked us to, uh, hold off in an email this morning, or, or yesterday. And, uh, so, um, but we still feel that the, the legal can be, uh, corrected in plenty of time, so that you can approve it in correct form. And if it would happen that it doesn't, then we just won't bring it back, you know, until later. And we'll just continue up to the next meeting. It will be right when you get it the next time.
Okay, any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-two dash twenty-one designated certain city property located in Zacateas Canyon and generally known as Buricul as a public thoroughfare and right-of-way.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, vote passes.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye, motion passes. And that brings us to the city members' report.
Uh, thank you, I'll be brief this evening, uh, uh, just a, a couple of comments, since we're technically, uh, now meeting for the, uh, perhaps the final time, um, this, this, this year, last regular meeting anyway. Uh, I understand we're probably gonna need a special?
On Thursday.
On Thursday, so, uh, make sure, make sure y'all show up for that. Sorry, I can't make it, um, but, uh.
It's gonna be a zoom.
It's zoom. It's Zoom, you can make it.
Two seconds.
She makes her life way easier.
It's my job.
Yeah, I'll probably be somewhere in Missouri. So anyway, just wanted to remark that one of the things that we came into 2022 with the full knowledge of was that in the post-COVID era, there was going to be trillions of dollars made available by the federal government to do any wild range of things. And, which turned out to be true, there is trillions of dollars out there for a wide range of things that the city staff has spent hours, two hours to count in the effort to successfully get some of those dollars. Well, I can report to you that it looks like by December 31st, two of the biggest projects will bring in some $16.6 million, half of that being Camp Naco, okay? And by the way, the $2 million I talked about earlier is private money, that's not federal money. There were also numerous other smaller grants through the year, several of which you heard and approved tonight, both from police and fire. We paid attention to a lot of details and we succeeded in a lot of areas. And the small grants are no less important to us than the big grants are. But still, and, you know, and if I can lament just a little bit with the countless hours that staff and others have put into these things, we are still in search of grant money that's still out there in order to replace our aging infrastructure systems, of which, you know, much of it is over 100 years old. And so I want to, I want to celebrate where we succeeded, but I also, you know, want to let you know that we're just going to redouble our efforts, because as long as the money's still out there, there's the one project for the water system, which is a partnership with Arizona Water Company, you know, was rejected. All of a sudden out of hand, because all of a sudden we had qualified for money for what we wanted to use it for. So we repackage the grant application, and now our application's number one. But, but of course, oh, by the way, you have to supply the most recent emergency mitigation plan from the county with your application, okay? Which was just completed but needs some review by FEMA. And so now, we've got everybody we can ask trying to convince our friends at FEMA that we need to have this done in time to successfully put the application in on January 27th. So it's been a really, really interesting, very productive, and a couple of ways, maybe a little disappointing year. But overall, you know, if we were going to get what we could from the federal dollars that are available in the post-COVID area, I think we have succeeded to some degree. So we will keep working on that. And so I know that in the case of the bikeways and the historic community out at Camp Naco, they very much appreciate all of your support in allowing us to pursue this funding, and which are projects that are going to actually leave legacy. And I hope that in most cases, the grants have to be spent in four years' time. I have basically told everybody just to call me when it's time to cut the ribbon in four years. And so with that, I want to, this is the last day you will see me this year.
We're going to be sad.
I know, I know.
I'm saying I'm already sad.
Yeah, Mel's already told me how much he's going to miss me. But I do want to convey that in addition to everything else I just said, it's, despite the ups and the downs and the ins and outs, it's been, it's been fun. And so I want to wish you the best for the holiday season and a happy new year, we'll see you on the 3rd. That's all I have.
Should we wish everybody happy holidays?
Well, I don't know.
Happy holidays.
But as, but before we end the meeting, you know, along with, you know, as we, as we close out the year, I would like to thank all of our city employees for another great year. As we know, there's been a lot of ups and downs. You are the backbone of city operations and make sure that the day-to-day operations run as smoothly as possible. So please know that you're all appreciated. I would also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a safe and happy new year. And also remember, our public safety personnel will be out there. Don't make their jobs any harder on New Year's Eve, please celebrate safely. See you next year. Do we have a motion, Jermaine?
I move a adjourned.
Second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
I think the chief is running out, is, how?